We begin to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if we could have a roll call, please. Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Present.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson.
Present.
Vice Chair Silverman.
Present.
And Chair Shannon Bergman is absent this evening.
All right, the next item is item four, public comment. This portion of public comment is designed to give members of the public who wish to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, an opportunity to speak. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to minutes. Item five, does anyone have any changes to the minutes?
I don't have any changes.
Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve, and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Well, through the chair, I'll do the roll call.
Oh, are we doing roll call?
No, it's been awhile since you chaired the meeting.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Silverman.
Yeah. All right, the next item is public hearing. I'm going to read the procedure for public hearing. Staff will present a report on history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with staff's recommendations. The applicant may make a presentation thereafter. Interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. Be aware that if you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice. The public notice, or in written correspondence, delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing, we ask that speakers fill out a speakers form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary, which is Ms. Porras, prior to addressing the commission. The speakers should come to the microphone and speak since the meeting is being recorded, and this will assist staff in preparing the minutes. The first public hearing matter is 1667 San Carlos Avenue. Does staff have a presentation?
Good evening, Lisa Costa-Sanders, principal planner. I'll be providing the staff presentation. The location of the project before you is 1667 San Carlos Avenue. It's located at the corner of San Carlos Avenue and Prospect Street. The existing site is 7,700 square feet in area. It contains an existing three-unit residential building. That building was estimated to have been constructed in the 1940s, and due to many alterations to the building over time, it is not eligible as a historic resource. The site is zone mixed-use San Carlos Avenue, which allows up to 59 units per acre. The request before you is for a design review of the new four-story mixed-use building, a conditional use permit to allow parking within 40 feet of a street, and a tentative map for the seven condominium units. This is the view from San Carlos Avenue. The proposed development includes one ground-floor commercial space that you see with the windows there, and six residential units. The entrance for the residential unit is that door on San Carlos Avenue with the metal awning detail above it. And all the six, the building is in a contemporary architectural style, and I'll defer to the project architect to discuss the design in more detail for you. And then this is the view at the side elevation as seen from Prospect Street. As I indicated, four-story development with ground-floor commercial and parking garage. There's three one-bedroom units on the second floor, two two-bedroom units on the third floor, and one three-bedroom unit on the fourth floor. Staff feels that the development is well-designed with high-quality architectural finishes and significant landscape improvements. Relating to the conditional use permit, as I indicated, it is required in our code whenever you have ground-level parking less than 40 feet from a street. And as you see from the site plan, the property is approximately 55 feet wide, so it would be very difficult to meet that setback requirement. And as well, given the smaller scale of the site, 7,700 square feet in area, it would involve quite a bit of grading to have below-ground parking. So staff is supportive of the conditional use permit. The parking is very well-screened as it's located within the garage. It will have a solid garage door. And then what you see here are three landscape green screens to provide some ventilation for that garage, but to also screen it from the public right-of-way. And then the tentative map is for the subdivision to create seven condominium units. Six of those are the residential unit and one commercial unit. The applicant did host an outreach meeting in September and also mailed a follow-up letter with the revised plans in January. We did take some time to work with the applicant to really refine this design, so it did evolve from that September meeting they held with the neighbors to the January meeting. But concerns that were expressed at the December meeting, as was relayed to us by the applicant, as well as some email correspondence from neighbors. There was concern with the size and the design of the building, concerns with limited parking, a request for a traffic study and traffic improvements, as well as concern with construction impacts. The applicant has reduced the overall size of the building, reduced the size of the units, as well as enhanced the design to address the first concern. And I will note that the project does comply with onsite parking. It provides nine parking spaces where eight is required, and it does not take away any existing street parking spaces. A traffic study is not required. The project complies, is well-under the maximum density for the lot, proposing six units where 10 is permitted under the density. And that was what was analyzed in the general plan, traffic study, EIR. So as such, we found that it is exempt from CEQA. And in consulting with our Public Works Department City Engineer, we determined that a traffic study would not be needed for this development. It's a net increase of three residential units. But given that, given the concerns from the neighbor, the applicant has agreed to contribute $8,000 towards traffic improvements that would be determined by the city engineer. And just to update you briefly, the city is currently undergoing a pedestrian safety evaluation of the San Carlos Avenue corridor. It's going to evaluate, do we have sidewalks on both sides of the corridor, or one side? Is it going to be tree-lined? Does there need to be any, you know, bulb-outs or crosswalk improvements? So at the completion of that study, then we will be able to determine what's the appropriate use of this contribution specifically at that Prospect-San Carlos Avenue intersection. It may be to improve the crosswalk as it goes across San Carlos Avenue, or improve the corner there as it meets. So that's what the applicant has agreed to that contribution, and we put that as a condition of approval. And then finally, the contractor will submit a construction staging and operation plan. Our new process is that we have construction meetings before construction work begins to make sure they've complied with the conditions, they understand the concerns of the neighbors, review the construction plan prior to any work beginning. And then finally, we have the formal motion before you. Staff is supportive of the request, and the architect and the applicant are also here this evening to answer any of your questions. That concludes the staff presentation.
Does anyone have any questions for staff at this time?
Just one. Do you know approximately when the completion of the San Carlos pedestrian corridor study will be?
I believe in the next couple of months. So it's pretty soon.
Great, thank you.
So there's no grading or dirt haul of significance with this project requiring a dirt haul route or any of that?
That's correct.
Okay, anyone else have questions for staff at this time?
No, but I did want to disclose ex parte communication. They've been out to the site with the developers, so.
All right, does the applicant want to present anything?
I just have a brief comment, and I'll let Steve walk you through if you have any questions.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the commission. We just really want to thank staff and our neighbors for guiding us to the project that you see this evening. The collaboration that came through listening to our neighbors and having a owner who's willing to leave something on the table makes all the difference. A project under density in a TOD district, I think it's one of a kind. Steve Kellin and the structural engineer went to great lengths to reduce the amount of steel in the building so as to reduce the amount of crane work, which is going to have a huge impact on the neighborhood as this building gets built. So we just appreciate the neighborhood outreach, which as you can see, we modified our plans twice on that basis. And if you have any specific questions, Steve's here to answer them this evening.
Good evening, Steve Kellin, project architect. Thought I'd just walk you through, you know, thought process, design of the building. So, you know, as staff went through, you know, it's proposed mixed-use building. We have a small commercial space on the ground floor with all of the parking contained in a garage, and then we have six residential units, you know, on the floors above. You know, it's an interesting site because it's a corner location, which always means that that kind of building is going to have two fronts, which is an important, you know, from a design standpoint. I think also in this particular location, it's kind of at the edge of the mixed-use district, so this is kind of on the far, you know, western end of San Carlos. So I think it's important to consider kind of more that transition zone, if you will. You know, what does that mean for this particular site, this building, consideration of, you know, the neighbors, the density, sort of intensity of use, you know, at that particular location. Also, you know, on this particular site, you know, it's long and narrow. It's on a street corner, and it has four beautiful existing street trees on that Prospect side. On the opposite side, you know, on the adjacent parcel, there's an existing three-story, you know, apartment building, and then there's a small, you know, commercial, or not commercial, small, you know, low-rise residential building in the back. So kind of thinking about those elements, you know, it really led us to, you know, we need to be sensitive to, you know, trees, the neighbor, how do we, you know, develop this building, consider stepping it back, you know, with deference to the trees, not, you know, becoming this imposing, you know, structure, you know, next to neighbors and also in that, with the other neighbors down the street, and then that transition zone. So, you know, there's an existing, you know, three-unit residential building, you know, that's coming out. You know, it was also important, you know, at that corner, I think, to consider traffic, you know, which was brought up at our community outreach meeting. So, you know, when we start to look at the next sheet, which is our site plan and ground floor, as I said, we have a small commercial space, and then all of our parking is contained, you know, within the garage. We have, you know, the commercial entrance, which is off of San Carlos Avenue, and then the residential entrance, which is also off San Carlos. The important thing about the site planning was, we decided that we wanted to increase the setback off of San Carlos Avenue, and that was on purpose because, you know, not only is it kind of more in keeping with the other buildings and that transition zone, but also because of the safety of that corner. So this allows, you know, setbacks when cars are coming in and out, you know, off of Prospect. You know, there's a much wider view angle, you know, looking down San Carlos Avenue so that cars can come all the way up, you know, and have a wider field of vision. We're also proposing, you know, a low courtyard wall to identify or help identify that residential entry. And so having the setback, you know, allows us to develop that and create, you know, kind of that second entrance, you know, on a narrow lot. And then the existing entrance for vehicles is on the Prospect Street side, and it's between, there's four trees that are along that Prospect side, and it's currently between trees two and three, and we're proposing to move that down to give, you know, even more, you know, of a buffer off of that street corner so cars coming in and out again, you know, kind of a safety issue there. So as we look at, you know, the next floors and how they lay out, again, relative to trees and, you know, the neighbor behind, you can see how the massing is generally located in the center, you know, of the lot, and that's on purpose. So we're pulling away from the trees, you know, on the Prospect side, and we're pulling away from the neighbor, you know, on the other side. So on the second floor, you can see we're proposing three one-bedroom units. You know, these are also kind of matching the architecture, a contemporary kind of open-floor plan. We also wanted to focus on, you know, as the building stepped back, creating, you know, extra value in terms of that indoor-outdoor living. You know, great climate, we have larger-than-normal, you know, outdoor spaces, and so those open living spaces flow, you know, out to each of those deck spaces. And then the main entrance to all of the units would be located on the backside, and that's in an open corridor, you know, on all the levels except, you know, the fourth floor. And I believe we're like 18 feet from any, from where the windows are located, you know, to that property line. So again, thinking about the neighbor on the other side, you know, they had some concerns, you know, were we, you know, we going to be right up on them? And so we explained how, you know, that was, you know, pulled back, you know, on that side. And on the third floor, we have two bedroom units, which, similar, you know, open-floor plan and large, you know, outdoor spaces. And then entrance to those, again, on that backside. And then fourth floor is a single-unit, three-bedroom, and it's also stepped in from the third-floor plate, you know, down below, as well as on the ends of the building. So even though it's not required on the San Carlos side in this particular location, we are stepping back, you know, even further, you know, with the exterior walls, both front and back. And that was important so that, you know, that fourth floor stepped in, you know, for privacy and massing. And then the roof plan up above, and I'll get into this with the elevations, some of the architectural components, you know, it's a flat roof, but some of the articulation that you can see in the roof plan is how we have, you know, some outdoor deck spaces, but we are creating some architectural elements with these trellises that become incorporated, you know, into those horizontal roof planes. And the exterior of the building, you saw one of the renderings, you know, these are just the two-dimensional drawings, but, you know, very classic. You know, we're trying to go for, you know, more of a timeless design in terms of, you know, horizontal lines, sort of simple use of materials, but using them in a way that, you know, create, you know, some difference in pattern, you know, no, you know, not large flat, you know, wall planes. You saw this rendering, this would be from, you know, the rear corner looking back towards San Carlos Avenue. So, you know, key elements to point out here are, you know, how we're using different materials. We're using stucco, we're using horizontal siding. We are creating offsets, you know, in those planes. So at the ground level, for example, you know, there's some implied columns, or, you know, architectural term would be pilasters. We're creating relief between, you know, those planes, as well as on the upper floors where, you know, we have thickened walls where windows, you know, get set back, you know, into those walls. We have horizontal planes, you know, with the decks and/or trellises. There are also some, you know, shading trellis elements on the second floor that wrap around and continue, you know, that line. And then from the front view, you can see those two, you know, the two different separate entries, you know, residential and commercial. And then we're really, you know, wrapping the building, you know, around those corners. So again, it's, you know, it's like the building has two fronts, and that's important. And you can see as it steps away, you know, from the trees on the Prospect side. And then back to kind of materials, we, you know, staff mentioned that we had worked on a revised design. So, you know, not only did we reduce the size of the building in response to some of the community outreach, and that was, we reduced the overall building size by over 1,000 square feet. And then we also looked at, you know, colors and materials for the building. So, you know, we kind of went to a more, you know, subtle and rich palette in terms of colors, you know, using more natural and kind of rich colors and materials. So the stucco color, you know, is more of an earth tone, complementary with the horizontal siding would be that darker color that's indicated as number three. And then we went to a dark bronze for all the doors and windows. So again, a very rich complementary color, you know, to the two main building colors. And then we're using some stain colors in the horizontal, you know, decks and eaves. And then on the underside, we're also staining. So, you know, the use of those horizontal projections will become an important design element as you view the building because you'll see all of those undersides, you know, the decks and roof overhangs. And that's indicated, you know, in number seven there, where we would use a tongue-and-groove, you know, wood that has a little bit lighter stain, so we differentiate between, you know, the darker number six, which would be those horizontal lines, you know, for the decks and overhangs. And then number five represents, you know, an idea we have at that ground level, you know, for the parking garage, to provide, you know, different wall plane material at the sidewalk, create some softness, allow some ventilation, you know, for the garage. So doing a wire mesh that creates a vertical trellis. And in our landscape plan, you know, we're showing vines that can grow up and fill that. And then of course, number four, using a more contemporary deck railing, you know, that would be a glass rail. Couple building sections just kind of, you know, show you our idea about how really the massing of the building is, you know, moving towards the center of the lot. You know, the long section at the top shows what I was talking about with the fourth floor where that, you know, would step in, you know, at the ends. And then of course, number two is a typical section anywhere along the length, which shows that massing, you know, centered in the building. And just a detail, you know, on the windows, like I talked about, just a typical wall is going to have about a two-inch, you know, recess for all the windows, and then we have some walls that are even thicker. So, you know, we're really trying to create, you know, a level of detail even though, you know, it's a modern design, you know, for articulation in those windows. And then landscape-wise, I would just say, we're complementing, you know, the design of, you know, the site and the building. There's an existing palm tree, which is on San Carlos Avenue, that didn't really seem to fit, you know, with the site or the building, so we are proposing to remove that. And a new street tree, which is located there on the left-hand side, and that's, that's going to be noted, that we will, you know, include a new street tree. And then likewise, on Prospect Street, we have the four large, you know, beautiful existing trees, and we just kind of want to complete that in the last planting area, you know, at the far right-hand lower corner of the site, and add another tree there. And in terms of the rest of the concept, you know, we're really trying to create a little bit of screening with some perimeter, you know, trees that'll grow up and help filter, you know, some of the relationship, you know, between adjacent neighbors. And then the rest of the planting fits within the San Carlos ordinance for water use and plants for irrigation. And then it was important at that street corner to keep, you know, the plant selections, you know, low, so again, we could maintain visibility, you know, around that street corner. And then in summary, I guess I would just like to say that, just to reiterate a few numbers, you know, the allowable square footage FAR for this site is 23,121, and our proposed building is 11,800. So, you know, we're roughly half of what's allowed. And same with density, it was important, you know, we really, like I said, in this transition area, you know, the site does support 10 units, and we're proposing six. So wanted to point those out, and here if you guys have any questions. Thank you for your time.
Does anyone have questions for the architect?
Just a brief comment and perhaps a question. Congratulations, I think you've done an outstanding job on this site, considering everything. You solved a complex problem, I think, and should be an asset to the city. I like the scale of it, not too big, but you've got enough on there on the site. Colors and the textures and the architectural style, I particularly appreciate. Also solving the parking problem without digging, going under, very creative. I noticed a stairwell, two stairwells on the corners on the east end of the building, and did you consider having a roof deck up top?
We did, but I think back to the concern for, you know, that particular location, you know, in density and intensity of use, we decided that it was going to be better, you know, not to do that, you know. It also allows a better opportunity for, you know, solar panels and other things that would be more complementary for the building.
That was my next question. Thank you very much.
Hi. I also appreciate the design, I really like it, though I have one concern. The stairwell turret, to me, I guess, at least in the rendering, just looks really harsh, I guess, against the, against the building next to it. And maybe that would be different in real life because it'll be wood, correct?
Correct.
But in the rendering, it looks very, I mean, it really just looks like you're just towering over them. And I'm, I guess I'm curious if there's anything else that could be done to soften that right there, which is my only design problem that I'm really, that I'm really seeing. I don't know if there have been in other buildings that we've looked at, if they've put false glass, or, I don't know what other, other buildings have done to address that. I don't know if you guys, my fellow planning commissioners, remember other, other things, or if this is just something I'm not going to notice as much once I see the actual material. But it just looks, it looks like a massive thing coming right up next to that building. Did you consider anything, any other kind of material or anything that might soften that a bit?
We did actually, I mean, you know, one of, a previous iteration, you know, we had used a combination of stucco, and we had some bands, you know, with the wood siding, and we looked at a few other things, you know, with staff and feedback, you know, from the community. And I think the consensus was that, you know, going to that wood siding, you know, created a little softer, you know, feel for that. Now, you know, on the other side, you know, there are windows, if you go back, if you look at the elevation, so, you know, it's not just a giant tower element, you know, necessarily. And some of it, you know, kind of plays with the geometry of just the modern building. But I think, you know, where we ended up with this was that I think everyone felt like the combination of, you know, that material plus, you know, a little bit darker or more earthy color, you know, kind of helped redo some of what you're indicating might be a visual, you know, more of a visual impact, so. And I think also, just to highlight, it has stepped back farther than the other planes of the building.
Yeah, I guess it is.
So you have, you have the lower band of, you know, the two entries, and, you know, the stucco there, we have, you know, some vertical, you know, vines that grow up, and then that, the rest of that element has stepped back beyond the other stucco element. So I think as you look at the relief in the planes, it's not, I think it's a secondary, you know, kind of element.
Am I the only one that had, that was my only, otherwise, I actually think, I mean, bravo, I think it's very nice. That was my only design concern, though I do have a parking concern that I can address later, because Jesse, it looked like you were going to jump in.
No, I know what you're talking about, but, so the, that element is further back from the decking area, basically.
Correct.
Okay, so, yeah, I see what you're saying. It is a little confusing from the rendering, but I think it is softened by.
Okay. Yeah.
Especially if it's set back.
It's certainly not the first time that I've seen something in a rendering, and it's turned out differently once it's built. Yeah.
And staff did spend a lot of time working with the architect on this, Al Savaya and myself. And Al's very particular on the design. So I was just looking back, and originally it was all stucco, and I believe it had some wood banding. And so we went back and forth with a lot of different options on how to address that and finally landed on that as, as being the final solution that we thought was the best quality.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then my second question is for the small commercial space. If I looked at, if I read that right, it's 675 square feet? What, what kind of tenant do you envision in, in a 675 square foot space?
Most likely.
Real efficient tenant.
That doesn't need to park anywhere? That, that would be my next question. Right.
I mean, I think uses we, and maybe Mr. Stafford could speak to this also, but, you know, typically we would see a professional office.
Okay.
You know, in that location.
And then I assume then, just given the location, we would be looking for on-street parking for the commercial tenant? Is that, is that what you're thinking? So there, there wasn't any consideration given to shared parking with, with tenants or anything like that, or you don't see, you don't foresee the need?
Well, you know, there's such a shortage of office spaces in San Carlos. Typically, who's going to come into that is more likely within that neighborhood than a half mile. There's just no available office space. And so I think we'll have an easy time finding the right professional office to come in.
Okay. Am I the only one that has a concern? It's not a huge space, so it's not the kind of parking concern I would normally have with the MUNs that we come across, but inevitably, it, it does raise the question, where, where would the, either the employee or the, you know, where would?
Is there never any question about the small commercial spaces that we, on mixed-use development? So I don't know if we're going to answer that tonight, but, I mean, I, again, I'm the parking guy, so, I mean, I see it on all the, all the mixed-use, you know, I mean, I have a problem with the code, but that's a longer conversation to have. The code is the code. And I, I agree, I think it's probably going to be someone that's really close by that, that needs an office space. And the idea that it's, that it's near the transit-oriented development, I think that the idea is if it's not, then they're hopefully taking transportation, public transportation for that. But, you know me, I, I don't like that part of the code, so.
Well, may I suggest in the future, if you find, if there is a tenant that has gone during the day and somebody that, in the office that wants to park during the day, maybe there's, maybe there's an opportunity for a shared situation. But I do understand, obviously, that code-wise, that's not something.
We've had, actually, the development on San Carlos Avenue, we had them, I think, agree to the shared. It was a bigger development.
It's a bigger, yeah.
A bigger space, I think it was.
Bigger space, for sure. Okay. Those are my only questions and comments. Thank you.
Jesse?
I like the design.
So how tall is the, the building immediately to the east? It's three stories. Did you guys, do you have any idea how big it is?
That's a good question. Let's see. I'm just looking at the survey, sorry. A lot of times they'll list the height of it. Yeah. Is that what it says?
It's roughly 30 feet.
I thought it was taller than that. Do you have an image that can, where we can see what, what the eastern side of the building's going to look like?
Are you asking?
Eastern side of your building?
If we have a rendering, or?
Yeah.
We didn't do a rendering of that side, but the, if we go to the elevations, if you, I don't know if you can zoom out so you can see the entire. So that would be elevation number four on what you show there. So what we were trying to do with that side of the building was, again, create some articulation on that lower level, you know, with the implied columns. And then up above, the use of different materials. So we have, you know, the stair elements that have windows, you know, with the siding. And then you have the covered hallways, which are on the second and third floor there. So there's quite a bit of relief in the depth of that building. So again, those are stepped back, you know, from, from the wall that has the doors and windows, that's about.
So those hallways are literally?
They're exterior-covered.
Okay. I didn't understood, I didn't understand that.
Correct.
Okay.
So it's, I believe it was like 18 foot four from that wall to the property line.
Okay. And then could you put on slide seven for a second?
I don't know the.
Your next slide? Yeah. So, oh, maybe slide eight? I thought it was seven. Oh, there we go. Oh, yeah, that's what I wanted. So right now, there's, it seems almost like a, it's a fence, but it feels more like a wall between this property and then the property behind it. And then it's like a driveway. You know, there's just like this tree here on this grass. Is that actually going to be there, or is that the existing wall and driveway?
You're talking about on the right-hand side of the rendering?
I'm talking about what would be the southern edge of your property.
Yes. So the, the front of the building and the rear of the building are very similar from the second floor up. And then we would have a fence that's shown here on the far right-hand side. There's an indication in the lower right-hand corner of a driveway that is on the adjacent property, you know, to the rear. And I believe that goes all the way to the back. And then there's, so I can't remember how far.
It's a really weird property behind you.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it looks like a traditional duplex, but then there's, then there's like that driveway that goes all the way to the back. And then it almost looks like, like a weird apartment building, or it's like, it's weird.
Right. Right. So.
This grass and this tree and everything, it's there?
No. The, where you see the first part of the driveway, that would continue all the way down the fence line. But on our property, in our landscape plan, we are proposing some trees in the rear to soften, you know, what would be our rear yard and immediate, you know, adjacency to the fence and that driveway.
So why shouldn't we require you to install solar panels on the roof?
Why shouldn't you require it?
Yeah, I just, to me, it's like, with a condo of this size, how is it gonna, I mean, because I'd love to see some solar panels on this building, and I just don't, I don't understand how it would work with, with seven condos, six condos.
Well, the, the building code requires that you have a solar area on the roof of a building like this. So in our building permit plans, we have to identify roof areas, you know, that can be used for future solar. I think, you know, the challenge that we see in projects like this is that there, a lot of times, is a fairly significant, you know, initial cost in solar panels. So I think the requirement, sometimes I think, is a little bit tough because, you know, it's one of those details, I think, that the owner has to look at, particularly in a case where either they're going to be, you know, for lease or for sale, and so you don't know how that fits.
Yeah, that's my concern, and maybe this is more of a question for the developer than for you, which is probably unfair of me, so, I mean, I can ask the developer. I just, to me, my instinct is that if we don't require you to actually install the, the solar panels, they're never going to be installed.
I think that's probably true.
Yeah. So can we make them install the solar panels?
There is a provision in our code that allows for an increase in floor area ratio when you incorporate green measures into the building. One of them, one of the items called out is solar panels, but there is otherwise not a requirement for solar panels. So it's, it's used within our code as an, as, as an incentive to get green features by allowing additional, a small amount of increase in the FAR.
Lot of dates coming.
I mean, just to me, it's, is there anything we can give you to get you to install solar panels on that building? I mean, I just, to me, it just, it seems like a shame. This building looks like it's designed for solar panels. You won't even see them. But there's, I mean, how is a, how is a condo community of six people going ever agree to install solar panels on a building? I mean, just, it seems silly.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with that reasoning at all. And, you know, for Mr. Lewis, this is a family piece of property, and so, well, I think it's not issues to be held, you know, as probably as rentals rather than sold. So it makes the decision a little more difficult from a line of, but I'm sensitive to what you're saying. You know, it's a nice, nice change.
Well, I know you're sensitive too, but what, what can I do to get you to install solar panels on this building?
Well, there's one neighbor that's giving us a tough time. Otherwise, I, you know, as a condition of, I would understand.
He might understand it, but it sounds like.
Well, now, he says he might understand it, so I'm, I'm just going to take it at that.
And I'm with you. I love solar panels too, and I agree that they're not likely to go on until we start requiring them, but it doesn't sound like we have the mechanism to do that.
I think it's a matter of the word choice. If the developer agrees to it, you can condition it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to come up with something. Does anyone else have any questions before we close the pub? Well, is there, is there anyone here from the public that I don't see that has an interest in, thank you, sir, that has an interest in speaking on this item? Public comment? I'm not seeing anyone, so I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Begrudgingly roll call.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Petterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes. So any discussion among the commission?
I can't believe I'm saying this, but I have a hard time insisting on solar panels here when we haven't done it anywhere else. And yet, and yet I really want them on there also. I, I'm just thinking about all of the other projects we've approved without them, and I'm having a hard time. I'm having a hard time with that.
Let me help you with the hard time.
Okay.
You know, there's no, there's no such thing as precedent up here. And the last project that we approved, now albeit a larger one, we did require solar panels. So, you know, I see it as a, I see it as a maturing and a progression of the thought process of the planning commission more than anything else. And I'd also ask that you consider the wording that I'm going to come up with, and I think it may make you comfortable.
I will, I usually do like your wording, so I will. I will consider that.
Any other discussion among the commission? I move that the planning commission grant approval of the request for design review, conditional use permit, and tentative map for the new six-unit mixed-use development located at 1667 San Carlos Avenue, APN 050-122-010, with the added condition that the developer work with staff to find a mutually acceptable plan that involves installation of solar on the roof of the building.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Petterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes. Congratulations on your project. Moving on, we're going to open the public hearing on item 6B, 537 Laurel Street. And I'm not going to read the rest of it. Does staff have a, a presentation?
Yes, we do. Andrea will present.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Andrea Martisich, and I'll be presenting the request for consideration of a conditional use permit, and I apologize, this should say conditional use permit, not amendment, to add three antennas to an existing wireless facility. And this is at 537 Laurel Street. The project site is owned by, or, excuse me, is owned by AT&amp;T and is an unmanned communications facility. The site is owned MUD for mixed-use downtown and has a general plan designation of mixed-use medium density. The entire property is fenced in and is not accessible to the public. On-site, there's a three-story building with two penthouse areas on the roof. So there are several existing carriers on-site and include AT&amp;T, Verizon, and T-Mobile. This proposal is for T-Mobile, who has six existing antennas on-site. Those six are split into three sectors, each sector having two antennas. Their proposal is to add three new antennas, so one antenna for each sector, for a total of nine antennas belonging to T-Mobile. The antennas will be co-located with the existing T-Mobile antennas and then face the same degree as the existing ones. And our study was completed as part of the application, and the consultant determined that the public exposure levels would not be exceeded at ground level. At the roof level, there is some exposure for occupational, or exposure that exceeds occupational levels. However, the report also included five compliance actions that would, that would bring the proposal into compliance with FCC guidelines. Those five actions were included as conditions of approval for the use permit. So this is the roof plan, and just to orient you, Laurel Street is on the left side of the screen. So Sector C is, is facing Laurel Street and on the facade. Sectors A and B are roof-mounted towards the rear of the building, so towards that back alleyway. And as I mentioned, T-Mobile is proposing to install one antenna in each, at each sector. The antennas are approximately 96 inches in height and 14 and a half inches across. In addition to the antennas, the applicant is also proposing to install RRUs, one behind each antenna. One of the existing antennas in Sector C over here that belongs to T-Mobile is also being proposed to be brought back closer to the building. It currently is out past the extent of the other antennas, and as part of the proposal, they want to bring it, excuse me, bring it back in line with the building. So these are the elevations. The one on the top is the southern elevation, so view of the building from the parking lot. The roof-mounted antennas, which are located here, are at 62 feet at the highest point, and the facade-mounted antenna here is at 59 feet. The municipal code does allow this height for the antennas because they're lower than the overall height of the building, which is 63 feet. For the antennas, the A and B, the antennas in the A and B sector are set back 17 feet 10 inches from the building where eight feet is required. The front sector, so Sector C, is on this lower elevation, which is your view from Laurel Street, and this shows the location of the new antenna. This antenna is proposed to be three feet from the front property line where five is required. In the municipal code, pretty much any standard within the wireless ordinance can be modified as part of the planning commission review. So it's not a normal variance process or anything like that. It's, it's something that's unique only to our wireless ordinance. So in this proposal, this would be three feet from the front property line as the building itself is at the five-foot setback. And then these are the views from the north and also the rear of the alley. So since the building is pre-existing with several carriers already located on-site, the city is somewhat limited in terms of what we can require. Because T-Mobile is co-locating, we can't require, you know, measures like screening the antennas of other carriers or things like that. In this situation, staff believes that the most appropriate measure in, in order to reduce visibility is painting the antennas and equipment to match the building. visibility is painting the antennas and equipment to match the building. So we included the rendering, or sorry, the proposed photo simulation of the, of the facade, which we thought was one of the most visible. So as you can see in the top, the current antennas, the T-Mobile ones are the lower-level antennas. They're currently white. And at the lower level, the proposed photo, they're proposing to paint all the antennas the color of the building, and then you can see the new antenna located in the middle of the other two smaller ones. So there are several findings that need to be met. These are all outlined in the staff report. Although the proposed installation is readily visible, the entire, the existing installation is also visible, so we feel that painting the antennas and equipment to blend with the existing surroundings is the most feasible way to, to reduce visibility as much as we can. For the modification for the front setback, so that facade-mounted antenna, staff is supportive of grouping the antennas together as much as possible. There's several other antennas facade-mounted as well from another carrier, and the applicant can go into it a bit more if needed about how the three antennas need to work together in order to complete that one sector, so each sector has the three antennas. The proposed use is consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance. If you, if you approve that modification, as I mentioned, the zoning ordinance does allow for that. And again, the RF study indicates that the proposal meets FCC standards with the requirements outlined in the study as conditions of approval. The site, again, is physically suitable for the use because it's a modification of the existing co-located antennas. Staff has received no correspondence from anyone within a 300-foot radius or inquiries about the project. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is here as well as the RF engineer if you have any questions. Thank you.
Does the waving the two feet in the setback, does that benefit the city in any way?
So I did some research while the other, the other item was being heard. I think in terms, it would depend in terms of what other alternatives there would be for locating the antennas. So if the alternative was to locate it somewhere where it was more visible, then I would say, yes, granting the three foot makes more sense in terms of reducing the visibility. The research I, you know, tried to do and find out, I think we're pretty limited because it's a co-located facility, to requiring them to move it. But again, that's, you know, it's these FCC rulings, so it, what I could understand, it comes down to, do we consider what they're doing is substantial change to what's there now? And if we don't, then I think we're pretty limited in terms of what we can deny or require them to move. So the FCC has standards on what they consider a quote-unquote "substantial change," and most of them apply to towers. In this case, for the building, what I found is that, you know, as long as it's not extending more than six feet, it seems to be considered, you know, a minor change. But again, I'm not an attorney, so I, I'm not 100% sure. So I think, you know, sort of to summarize it, if, it would benefit the city if the alternatives in terms of where they could be located are more visible, then I think it would benefit the city to approve that modification.
Where, where are we in the 90 days?
We are pretty close. We actually had them, we might actually even be over. We had them scheduled for the last hearing, but because of lack of quorum, we had to continue them to hear. So I could, if you'd give me a minute, I could double-check how we are in terms of the--
One last question before you do that. The antennas that are above, that are currently white, are those T-Mobile antennas as well?
Those are AT&amp;T. And the way, also just to follow up with that, the way that our code works is if a carrier replaces antennas, it's a code compliance, so staff-level review. So if AT&amp;T came and replaced those antennas, we could still require things like painting them, but it doesn't go to public hearing. So really, unless those antennas all came down and then they came back, we'd sort of have our hands tied in terms of what we could require.
Anyone else have any questions for staff?
I mean, I think I'm sharing the same line of frustration that you are. I feel, I mean, are we gonna be stuck with these ugly antennas till the end of time? Is, at some point in time, will, will somebody allow us to require some design of these existing antennas, or are we just gonna have to look at this on Laurel Street forever? Sorry. It's just so frustrating.
That's a very good question. So it's my understanding that we're, that this is going to be a brand-new use permit, correct? This is--
I believe so, yeah.
Yes, because they have six existing, and they're asking for permission to install three additional, right? So that opens up the use permit application for the city to evaluate on a more comprehensive level. And because we have design standards for where antennas should be located relative to, you know, mounting on the building, if on the roof, then how far away from the edge of the roof and height requirements and so forth, we can ask wireless carriers to comply with those locational requirements. So when staff evaluated this, because we are, there were already two existing T-Mobile antennas on the front facade, and this is my understanding from the commission, is a concern about, primarily the concern about the antennas being located on the front facade in a very visible way. So the question is, would we permit this if, today, you know, if we were kind of starting over from scratch? I think that's what your question really drives at. And unfortunately, the city attorney is not present this evening. Normally she is, so I will have to find, make sure that she's available for the benefit of these types of discussions in the future. But my understanding with a use permit application is that once it's open, you can look at that. So this may be the most, you know, kind of conservative approach, but the commission could look or ask the applicant to respond to whether or not they evaluated relocating that sector, those three, there's two now, there's the one, relocating that sector, were there, are there any other alternatives to place that sector on the building? So maybe that's a question for the applicant.
And just one last, one last question. And I, I'm just going from memory. About a year and a half, two years ago, we, didn't we have an application for, I don't, I don't remember who the carrier was, but there was quite a bit of discussion on that at that time. Actually, I'm surprised that none of the property owners that showed up for that meeting didn't show up for this meeting, which is quite shocking. But I think one of the concerns was the angling of, of the antennas, given the zoning on El Camino, given the building we just approved at 520 El Camino, and those standards. So my, my main question was, did we, did they ever get installed? One, two, was there ever a follow-up study to that?
So those were installed, those were the Verizon antennas.
Okay.
And you can actually see, these are them here, those ones. So with that application, you're correct, there was originally a proposal facing the rear where a future residential could go, and definitely some concerns with that. So in this, with that application, the commission made the, you know, the exception finding to allow those in the front. Roof-mounted antennas are required to be in the rear half of the building. So with this one, the commission decided that it was more important to have those facing Laurel than El Camino, so made the exception for setbacks for that one. There has not been a study specific to those antennas, although they were included in the RF study for this, this, this application. So the radio frequency was measured as part of this application and in the overall cumulative measurements, but there's not been a standalone study with just those. And one thing I just wanted to add, sort of on a side note, going back to that other application, I know the commission asked at the time, you know, what happens if we approve the antennas and then a building comes up later? What's the process with that, especially because now the public's, right, much closer to, to those emissions? And that's something that we asked as part of this application, so that's something that the engineer might be able to sort of speak to a little of standard practice, what happens when a residential building goes up right in front of existing antennas?
Okay.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Well, we'll bring the applicant up, but in the interim, if you can find out where we are on the 90 days, thanks. So I guess we'll hear maybe from the engineer?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Durang Tek. I'm the engineer for the RF emission analysis on, on the, on this proposed T-Mobile site. And--
I guess there were two questions outstanding.
Okay.
The easier one, I think, may be, what analysis did you do, or what, you know, what would happen if a residential building was built adjacent to this? Would at that point, the RF levels exceed what is permitted and what would happen? And then the second is whether you considered any other locations on this building other than the front?
Okay. So first question, if, if you have a building that comes up and it's in, within that distance of a safe zone, if you, you can say a safe zone, then by FCC rules, you have to do something about it, meaning either turn down the antenna power or move the antenna or, or move it to the locations. Something must be done if that was the case, because if there's a building in the front of it at the same height, that's where worst-case scenario would happen. If that happens, if a building certainly come, come up, it would be their best interest to do that anyway, because there's a lot of RF that is being blocked by, by that. So that, something needs to be done. And then the second question, whether, I'm not here as a T-Mobile engineer, so I wouldn't have known, I wouldn't know where, if they had considered other locations, but I would imagine it would be in the same existing sectors where, where they need the coverage from. So they've already have the site, so they know where the site, the sector covers, the different sector covers, so I would imagine it would be, it would be in the same space.
Does anyone have any questions for the RF engineer?
You said that if a building went up next to it, there's a, and it was within the safe zone, what is the safe zone parameter approximately?
Right now, it's 19, on the, 19 feet from the face.
19 feet.
Sector C of T-Mobile, the one, the one you see on the bottom right, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for the engineer?
I mean, no, because I can't really answer my question about other alternative locations.
All right.
Can--
We'll, we'll bring her up.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Do you wanna come up? You're the applicant.
Good evening. My name's Caitlin McGlister. I'm the land use planner on this project, essentially the project manager. So we did look into different locations for Sector C. First issue is that this is an ideal spot for any carrier. There's no interference, and there's no other items that could possibly get in the way of the signal. It completes the network in the best possible way in its current location. However, in addition to that, there is, so you can see that where the Sector C antennas, there is a access door there. So there's another little penthouse that goes up so many feet, not quite as tall as the one on the corner, but if we were to move the antenna location, it would have to essentially just move straight back, in which case it would have to, the antennas would have to be able to reach up and over that penthouse, which would bring the height up to something that would not be ideal, I'm sure, for any aesthetic. Additionally, there's always issues with roof penetrating in terms of leasing agreements. You also have to move your lease space around, which becomes another issue. Also, the site is within the 6409 parameters, and so T-Mobile would not be the most open-minded to moving a sector that is very ideal for the network when they don't, they aren't forced to.
Requiring to.
Yes. So we always, it's, we can recognize, as, as someone that doesn't actually technically work for T-Mobile, but as a contractor, I can recognize when there's going to be an aesthetic issue brought up. So we always do look for other alternatives, but it's often very difficult when you have a site that has a lot of tall penthouses on it. Also, these antennas have to be tall enough that they can reach up and over parapets as well. And oftentimes, what would seem to be a better idea, as in taking it off the facade, often isn't actually that much better-looking. We also did look into screening the existing antennas on the sector. The only issue with that that I saw was that it would end up being a very large box, and I wasn't sure if that was gonna be much better than just having these three smaller rectangular-type boxes. Also, with the carrier above, in order to completely cover the antennas, we would have to go into their lease space, and we would start to block their antennas as well, which would be another issue. Or we would just not block their antennas, but the proposed antenna would stick up out of the box. So overall, I, we believe that what was proposed would be the best.
Thank you for walking me through that, but actually, it doesn't make me love him, but it does help me understand it a bit better.
Right. That's the trickiest thing about this, especially designing these, is that there's so many parameters that are difficult to move around, and sometimes screening these items, I mean, they're not small antennas, you know, it's putting surfboards up there, you know, and that can be very difficult, and I completely understand the frustration. And oftentimes, I do find myself trying to convince T-Mobile or the carrier to do something that they aren't legally required to do, and so it's, it's hitting a brick wall, you know, it's, it's difficult. But I understand your frustration, yeah.
Any other, any other design thoughts from you guys? That's all I got.
How much, how much time do we have left on the 90 days?
So we are past it. It's the 60 days because of the co-location. So they submitted originally in December, resubmitted at the end of January, and were declared complete for the last, before the last hearing. So they've, they agreed to continue to this date, so we're already actually past that.
So if we don't approve, basically, they just get approved as a matter of law?
I believe so, if their attorney pushes forward with that.
Here we are again. I mean, I just, I would love to see what the alternative designs looked like.
I was gonna say, for the Verizon application, a few years ago, we had them propose the, the, like, screening walls like a parapet, and it, it did not look great. It didn't go over the whole building. They were limited because AT&amp;T's the landlord, and so they were limited on what they would actually allow them to do. I've worked with Caitlin on other projects where she sent me, like, you know, steam pipes and different things that work with kind of like industrial buildings. With this particular site, though, I think, I agree, we've had a struggle trying to find a way other than painting to camouflage it with all of the parameters that, that were mentioned, as well as, you know, the landlord having to agree to everything.
Being the abstract, the idea of being taller doesn't bother me, because this building is so much taller than everything else around it, other than, you know, the Samtrans garage. But I'm, but I'm not, I'm not a visual person, so I can't, like, envision what these taller antennas would look like.
So one, one thing that would, a few things. So if you approved something taller than 63 feet, which is the maximum height now, that would be the same process by which you'd be approving the exception to the setback. So it would have to be approved by planning commission. My concern would be that once you approve that new height, whatever that is, any new carriers could now use that taller height to go up to. So the, the way the code reads is by right, even if you're, you're taller than the maximum allowed height, you can go up to whatever that maximum height is. So once a new antenna's at, I don't know, 75 feet or 80 feet, that's now the height for any antenna that comes in afterwards.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna, you know, make this comment, which I've made before. I really, 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 really want to see these prior to the expiration-- I really, 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 really want to see these prior to the expiration of the time period, you know, because otherwise, it just, I mean, it already feels a little bit like we have no choice, but if we don't have the time necessary to come back, it really, I mean, it's like, I don't know. I'm sorry. I don't mean to express my frustration at you, but I am frustrated because, I mean, to me, you know, this is ugly. It's in the front of the building. You know, I think that it is, you know, pun intended, amplified by the, you know, the white AT&amp;T antennas that are directly above it. So even though it's painted, you're still drawn to it because you, you know, you see the white AT&amp;T antennas, but apparently we can't do anything about those. So here we are again. Anyway.
And through the chair, I think one of the reasons why staff did not request renderings for the alternative that you just described, Caitlin, which was to remove Sector C and push it back along the roofline on top of the penthouse, because you would need to put it on top of the penthouse, I believe is what you said. And again, the height, that increase in height, if the Planning Commission preferred that over the three antennas flush to the building, that's something that the commission could do. But when staff was first evaluating this, we didn't think that would be an option that the Planning Commission would want to consider because of the increase in height and because it would set a new benchmark for height for any additional carriers. So we're hearing the commission very clear. What we can do is part of the information that we request from future applicants and being really sensitive to this particular building because of its current state with all the different carriers located on it, is we can ask for renderings for different options early on and bring those back. And certainly, we can make a note to the file, especially for AT&amp;T, when they come back, because we know they always do, as technology is always changing. We can work together to try and, you know, slowly turn around the appearance of this building. But I just, you know, wanted to make it clear to the Planning Commission that if you really felt strongly about the location of Sector C, you do have the ability to approve it with the condition for relocation, even if it means increasing the height. It's just that we didn't think that that would be ideal, so that's why we didn't present that option before you.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm certainly not convinced that's the right option, but I do agree with David. It would be nice to have seen it. I drew a little stick figure on my thing. It doesn't really do it justice.
And actually, her stick figure doesn't bother me, and I also, I mean, but I wonder, you know, when you say, and I'm not asking you to answer this question because it's not going to matter for today, but when we say, well, once you approve one at that height, then you have to approve others at that height, that wouldn't necessarily bother me so much if they were at that location, if basically they were only, we were only allowing them to be that height at that location.
Sector C.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't actually look, I mean, I doubt there are going to be very many places you can really see it, except maybe like, you know, standing in front of Blue Line Pizza, you know, looking in that direction, because the building is so massive. But anyway.
Can we, I think I had asked this too before the meeting. The code requires if staff asks for a new study every 12 months, is that correct? Or what's the code on that?
So let me get to the use permit, because we added it in there. So I believe it's within 45 days of installation, and then after that...
They're an annual...
Yeah, it's, sorry, let me just find it. It's every three years after the first 45-day report. So after that, every three years, the city can request additional reports.
So how do we know? How's there constant monitoring of the RF if we're doing it every three years?
I don't believe there is unless a new application comes in, and then we get the most recent.
And there's nothing we can do about that?
Actually, some wireless carriers do provide RF reports. So on occasion, those will come across my desk. We look at them, and they're filed with the application. So they do, you know, they remember the condition of approval, and so they're submitting their reports.
But they're only doing it every three years?
That's correct, because that's what we require. I mean, one of the things that we're going to be looking at in the very near future, among all the other things we're looking at right now in the city...
Put that one on the list, too, please.
No, it's on the list. It needs to be, is an update to our wireless ordinance. It needs to be updated to comply with the recent changes, with the permitting processes for changes to our existing facilities and so forth. So we're going to be working with someone from our city attorney's office. You actually met him. He came and gave a presentation, I think, on some of the limitations, Kai, exactly. So we'll be working with Kai on that, and that's something we can bring back to the commission as a study session item, perhaps, prior to bringing it for formal hearing, so we can get some thoughts on that.
In theory, we would never know, say, as an example, one area goes out for T-Mobile, I'm just using T-Mobile as an example, and they increase the coverage on another area because that area is out. We would never know unless we happen to be within the three-year history and they happen to have done the study at that time.
I'm not sure I follow. So if, we wouldn't know...
The RF levels.
Well, we know the RF levels at the, you know, there's a study done at the beginning.
Yeah, but all those levels can be increased or decreased at any given time, right? Is that, am I understanding that? I'm not an engineer, so...
The study is done looking at worst case.
The worst case, the maximum. Okay.
Maximum power, all channels.
Everything, everything on that location turned up.
Right. Which is not, which is not in real life. That's never known.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, but when you do that, are you, is your worst-case scenario full power on all of the antennas that are up there at the same time?
We do. We take into account the other ones, too, how much they contribute to T-Mobile.
Not just at that moment, but like if you were to turn, you guys know the specifications on all of the others and max them out, too?
We do know them, yes. We do know them, particularly for this site, for this building, because we've done some for the building owners that we've done for...
So you're saying you got even more data on this particular building?
The data I've seen in the report is we've used all the other carriers' information up to date, including Verizon as well.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant or the engineer? I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second. There's a motion and a second, and I suppose there's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Petersen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Any additional discussion among the commission?
No, but now I'm starting to visualize it with actual surfboards up there, thinking we might want to think about that next time.
You know, as a design standpoint, you know, actually, like having them look like a surfboard?
That could be better.
You know, maybe like design, like, you know, have them put like, paint like ocean on the side of the building?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's an idea. Any other comments from the commission?
No, just added to our list of revisions, or hopefully, I know that every time we have one of these applications, it's the same. We have a lot of the same's, you know, and that helps to contribute to that list.
Patterns, right? So the motion is on page seven of the report, if someone...
And through the chair, if I may offer this, if the commission feels that this may add some value or benefit to the decision you're making this evening, you could add a condition that allows staff to take a look at a rendering that shows a modification to Sector C located towards the back of the front facade in that penthouse area, if you'd like to give some discretion to staff to work with the applicant to see what that would look like.
So would the condition be that the applicant is required to submit that alternative rendering to staff and giving staff discretion to choose the alternative rendering instead of this one? Would that be...
That could be something you direct staff to do, to work with the applicant, so that they provide a rendering for Sector C evaluation and give that discretion to staff, which all of, which would need to be submitted prior to building permit issuance.
That's...
I like it.
I like that.
I like it.
But keep in mind that the height, I mean, it's going to trigger off something potential for that particular site. So, I mean, we might have other antennas that are going eight feet, 10 feet higher, depending on where that alternative plan is.
Yeah, I mean, I would, you know, to the extent that whoever makes the motion does add that condition, which I would be likely to support, I say that with, you know, direction from staff to staff, at least from one planning commissioner, that I wouldn't want to see staff approve something that allowed an increase in height everywhere on that building.
That's understood. And there's also the additional caveat that I should share with you, which is, excuse me, the building, you know, AT&amp;T, which owns the building, would need to agree to the revised location, should that be the case. Because they're leasing that to the T-Mobile.
Someone want to make a motion? Okay. One moment.
All right. And then you guys are just going to have to help me word it a little better if it comes out not quite as good as we were hoping.
I move that the Planning Commission approve T-Mobile's request for a conditional use permit to install three new antennas and associated equipment on an existing building at 537 Laurel Street, based on the required findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report, with the additional condition that the applicant submit to staff additional renderings of Section C at a different location.
And give staff, did you say give staff, did she say that already? I'm sorry.
She did not. She did not.
And gives...
And give staff discretion.
Yeah.
Give staff. That's a pretty ugly-worded one, but...
That's all right. It's going to be pretty in the minutes. And the discretion is to staff to select the design that minimizes the impact of the additional antennas.
Staff, the discretion to select the design with the least visual impact.
All right. Sounds like a great motion.
I'll second that motion.
And there's a second. Roll call.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Petersen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. And you know what? I don't think that it matters now or really ever, but I, did we make a motion to close the public hearing? We did? Okay. So moving on to Item 7A, is there any report on recent city council actions?
None on any recent ones.
Thank you. And do any members of the Planning Commission have any comments or reports they'd like to make?
I do. Briefly, the citywide Wayfinding Steering Committee, which I'm a member, had its kickoff meeting on February 16th at 8:30 in the morning. And the consultants doing the study are Hunt, consultants of Pasadena, my hometown, and Nell Seelander led the meeting. There were several other city officials elected and appointed in attendance, and will be meeting again probably as soon as later this month. And also, I'd like to report they had coffee and donuts.
Fantastic. Well, thank you. Any other Planning Commission comments or reports?
I don't have anything.
All right. Is there any correspondence?
None this evening.
All right. Other than, of course, what was part of the packet. And is there any, are there any planning staff comments, reports, or updates of current projects?
Yes. So for the Planning Commission's next meeting, which is occurring on March 20th, a redesign of an existing hotel located at 26 San Carlos Avenue will be presented for the Planning Commission's consideration.
At 26 San Carlos Avenue?
I believe that's the address. It's, excuse me, El Camino Real. That was a big mistake. 26 El Camino Real. I don't know, sometimes I get those streets confused, or just the major, major ones, but perpendicular. Thanks for paying attention. And at the meeting following that, either the meeting following that on April 3rd or April 17th, staff will be bringing forward an application for a new hotel located at the corner of Industrial Road and Britton. In other news...
New hotel at Industrial and Britton?
That's correct.
On the corner?
On the corner. I believe I mentioned this on a couple occasions before, but...
It's right at the intersection there. I would imagine it's the office building right there, right?
It's on the...
Okay.
It's northeast. Northeast.
Those buildings are all north corners.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Okay.
Okay. Interesting.
Yeah, so that'll come forward in April. And then with respect to development on the progress of the single-family house size project that we are embarking upon, we will have later this month, on March 29th, our first kind of kickoff meeting, if you will, which will consist of a study session with the RDRC. So again, that's March 29th here at City Hall, first study session with the RDRC, so that we can get input from the RDRC on that topic. Other related information I'd like to share with the commission is that we received a total of 25 applications from people who are interested in serving on the advisory committee. Most of those were in the homeowner category, so if I haven't mentioned it before, just to share, we carefully thought about the makeup of this committee, and the committee will be made up of four homeowners, one architect or designer, one local builder or developer, and then one residential Realtor, Realtor that is knowledgeable about real estate specifically in San Carlos. So it was really impressive to see so many people. I know there's a lot of interest throughout the community, but so many people willing to dedicate their time to really participate in the advisory committee. That was really great to see. So the next step is for council to go through the applications and select individuals to interview, to go through an interview process, there's quite a few of them to get through. But we have really good, you know, cross-section of the community, so that's great to hear, which is what we wanted for this committee. So I'll probably give updates, you know, to the commission at each hearing. This is moving pretty quickly, and just today I was able to confirm that the study session can take place on March 29th.
May I make a humble suggestion through you to city council that the four homeowners they pick are from a cross-section of neighborhoods in San Carlos? It'd be a shame if everybody was from the hills and there's nobody from the east side or vice versa. The flats, the hills, and the east side, I think everybody has their unique challenges when it comes to residential design, and it'd be nice to hear from a cross-section.
I'd be happy to share that with the council.
Thank you. Oh, and then one more thing I should have mentioned. I will not be here on March 20th. I will be in Mexico or on the way back. Either way, I will not be calling in.
You may not get back in.
All right. We'll see.
Shannon here on the 20th?
There might be a wall up by then.
Do we believe that Shannon's going to be here on the 20th?
I believe she will be.
Okay.
I'll make sure we have a quorum.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. If there's nothing else from staff or the commission, the meeting is adjourned. If there's nothing else from staff or the commission, the meeting is adjourned.